All right. Well, then, welcome, everyone. I make sure I got the mics on and videos on and let's do a little adjustment there. Okay, welcome, everyone, to the February 16th, 2022 Los Banas City Council meeting. We are still in virtual mode, and so we have to read this, the guidelines for the Zoom and YouTube meeting format. The City Hall Council chambers remain closed to the public. In accordance with Assembly Bill 361, all members of the council and city staff will join the meeting via phone or video conference, and no teleconference locations are required. Audio/video broadcast, the City Council meeting can be accessed in real time from your computer, your tablet, your smartphone or the smartphone. The following links, you can get it at YouTube channel 96, cable Comcast Channel 96, YouTube, City's YouTube station, or you can go to the city's website and get the Zoom meeting codes. How to comment during a public meeting? Public comments will be taken at the time of each eligible agenda item. If you are a Zoom Video Conference participant, to comment by Zoom Video Conference, click the Raise Your Hand button to request to speak when public comment is being taken on an eligible agenda item. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. If you are a phone participant, to comment by phone, call on one of the above-listed phone numbers on the website. You will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine to request to speak when public comment is being taken on an eligible agenda item. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. Then press star six to unmute yourself in order to speak. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. All attendees shall be muted upon entry to the meeting. Please do not raise your hand if the item currently being heard is not the item you wish to speak on. We will call for public testimony on each item individually. When the item you're interested in is called, then public speakers are invited to raise their hands. Raise yours, and then we will call them in the order they are raised. You may, of course, speak on multiple items, but your comments during each item must address the item currently under discussion. Speakers attempting to speak about items other than the item currently under discussion will be muted and asked to wait for the item they're here to speak about to be called. If there is a disruption in the meeting, the live feed to YouTube and Channel 96 will be paused for a short period of time. Once the disruption is corrected, the live feed will resume and the meeting will continue where it left off. So with that, I will open my tools here. Okay, and I will call the meeting to order at 6:08 PM, and we'll ask Police Chief Breezy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Maloney, roll call.
Jones?
Present.
Lambert?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Lamis? Faria.
Here, we have a quorum. We will now move on to item four, consideration of approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, pro Tim Lambert, will make a consideration for approval of the agenda.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember Jones, I'll second that.
Thank you, I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Lambert, and second by Councilmember Jones, to approve the agenda as submitted. Roll call, Ms. Maloney.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamis? Faria.
Yes. Motion carried, agenda has been approved. We will go now to our presentations. We have proclamations, and the first one we're going to go to is the proclamation recognizing four chaplains Sunday. And do we have our recipient here? Mr. Rick Gerardo? Is Rick here tonight? There he is. Our American Legion Chaplain, Mr. Gerardo. So here's the proclamation. Whereas February 3rd, 2022 marked the 79th anniversary of the sinking of the troop ship US Army Transport Dorchester, which carried to their deaths four US Army chaplains of three faiths who stood united in prayer as the ship went down. And whereas these four chaplains, Roman Catholic, Jewish, and Protestant, gave their own life jackets to four soldiers and thus sacrificed their own lives to save the lives of others. And whereas the heroic deeds chaplains Lieutenant George L. Fox, Lieutenant Alexander D. Good, Lieutenant John P. Washington, and Lieutenant Clark V. Poling, and their combined act of supreme devotion and sacrifice for American liberty and human freedom will be an inspiring and ever-shining example of real brotherhood for all time to the people of the United States and to the world. And whereas we must all see to it that their supreme sacrifice to the common cause of human freedom and justice for all shall not have been in vain, therefore be it proclaimed, the mayor and city council members of Los Banas. Do hereby recognize February 6th, 2022 as four chaplains Sunday, and encourage all to give special recognition to the memory of those who sacrificed their lives for the cause of freedom. Mr. Gerardo, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, City Council, and for honoring these four chaplains and honoring the American Legion. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Give us our best to all the veterans, and thank you for the breakfast the other day, I enjoyed it very much.
Thanks for coming, thank you.
Very good. And so now we will go to our next recognition, we have certificates of recognition. And let me look my sheet up here. And these are for the Lions Club Speech Competition. And we have five high school students here. We have, are they all here this evening? We'll point that out as we go through, none are here, okay.
Yeah, I don't see anyone.
All right.
Be in attendance.
Xandrea Alfonso Stires, first place, senior. Sage Areya, junior. Alana Watkins, senior. Isabella Faria, sophomore. And Brockton Borelli, freshman. And these students all achieved recognition and cash prize in the Lions Club Speech Competition. First place went to Xandrea Alfonso Stires. Kind of cool to have students, children I have taught and do teach, achieve at these very high levels, so we'd like to recognize. So none of them are here this evening. All right, so then we will move on to certificates of recognition for the Merced Mariposa Section FFA Project Competition. And here we have Emma Van Loobensels, a senior, the Gold Award and the Award of Merit. Excuse me, Owen Buffuno, a freshman, Gold Award and the Award of Merit. Emma Baker, junior, Gold Award. Laney Rocha, junior, Gold Award. Larry Borelli, sophomore, Gold Award. Brooklyn Silva, sophomore, Gold Award. And Colton Kanamoto, freshman, Silver Award. And so we commend and congratulate these students on their high achievement, and we look forward to recognizing even more as we go. With that, I'll close item five, issues of certificates of recognition and proclamations, and move to item six, the public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within jurisdiction of the City Council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines on how to participate and make comments are listed on pages one and two of this agenda. Comments received prior to the meeting will be read into the record at the appropriate time during the council meeting. So first, we'll go to Zoom to see if anyone would like to speak. Ms. Maloney, do we have anyone?
I see Kathy Ballard, would you like to speak?
Very good. All right. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Ms. Ballard.
Hey, did it, without the tech guy here.
Look at you.
I'm here again to ask that the meetings be open. Proclamations, it would be awesome to see these people in City Hall. I used to love to take photos of them for all the accomplishments that they had made. I can't watch everybody, if I'm in City Hall, I can see everybody's reaction. I have half of it have no pictures, so I can't see the people. It makes it really hard, you'd like to see what's going on around you. And I'd love to hear, Mr. Mayor Faria is going to be doing his State of Our City, and I would like to see that in person. We need to get back to normal, and I'll keep coming here as long as we're shut down like this. Sorry, you have to look at me every meeting.
Problem.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. I see no other hands raised, do we have any comments by email, Ms. Maloney?
I will check to see if any came in since I last checked. And we have received no emails.
Having received no further comment in the public forum, we will close the public forum and move to the consideration of the approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion, unless removed from the consent agenda by a City Council member. Ms. Maloney?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Lawn numbers 23082 through 231067 in the amount of $571,966.7. City Council Resolution Number 6462, reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the City of Los Banas pursuant to the provisions of AB 361. City Council Resolution Number 6463, amending the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget by increasing appropriations and expenditures for Landscape and Light District Number Nine, Jolynn Manor Ranch Del Amigos in the amount of $6,877.31. City Council, City of Los Banas Resolution Number 6464, amending the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget by increasing appropriations in the general fund for recreation and electricity and gas in the amount of $53,000, and to recruit direct staff to investigate solar options at the community center. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you, go through council, see if anyone wants any items pulled for discussion or separate vote. Mr. Jones?
No item there.
Thank you.
No items, thank you.
Mr. Lambert?
No items here either, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item D for discussion.
Item D for discussion, okay, so we'll go ahead and go straight to that, and that's Parks and Recreation Manager.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Lewis, do you have any specific areas that you'd like to discuss, or do you want me to provide an overall discussion?
Okay, I'm already unmuted. Yes, the report refers to the increase in our electricity being paid to PG&E, and it also made reference to the community center, to College Greens Building, and also to the Ranchwood Facility Building. But in the report itself, on page two, or page 40, I should say, the bill, the billing information that's been provided to the council is for the community center only. So I'm wanting to find out whether or not there's some actual concerns about the other two community buildings within Los Banas, and whether or not their bills over the, between '20 and '21 have increased significantly, that we need to be concerned about them as well.
Yes, so I can certainly get the information for the other two buildings. In our recreation budget, which is our general fund budget for recreation, we have a line item for electricity and gas, and within that line item, three facilities are paid into it for electricity, for PG&E billing, the community center, Ranchwood, and College Greens. We have not had any issues with increases with College Greens or Ranchwood, but I would be happy to provide that monthly data to the council. The primary cause of the increases at the community center was due to the original, when the community center was built, the transformer, when it was installed, the wiring was installed incorrectly and ended up canceling out about two-thirds, 67% of the billing. We also faced some challenges with peak hour rates changing there in the late spring from PG&E later in the afternoon, I think from four to nine, they created as well as a four-month summer rate from June to September, which overlaps with a lot of the community centers' afternoon programming and afternoon availability. So regarding College Greens and Ranchwood, we haven't had any concerns with that as far as dramatic increases or challenges to the budget, but I'd be happy to provide that data.
Okay, now also the billing months of June 29th through July the 28th, it shows $36.97, and then there was this enormous jump for July 15th through August 15th for $10,451.71. Was that, does that have anything to do with when they came in and looked at the, you know, did an evaluation and found that the transformer was incorrectly wired, and did they go back and back charges, or did we actually use that much energy during that time?
Yes, so first regarding the $36.97 from 6:29 to 7:28, my understanding is that's just, PG&E will do some billing corrections, and that was just, wasn't representative of necessarily that stretch. You'll see from 6:15 to 7:14 is also covered, and 7:15 to 8:15, so there's that overlap there. I think that $36 was just a billing correction on there. And regarding the $10,000 bill from July 15th to August 15th, that was a direct cause of that billing, and that was based on the usage at the community center. So March 1st, 2021, PG&E corrected the issue with the transformer wiring onsite. That, again, that issue was part of the installation of the building back in 2010. And so that is reflective of both the new wire, the wiring picking up the correct total usage at the community center as well as the new peak hours, so that's why you see such a dramatic increase, and that's why it was such a concern to staff moving forward. PG&E has not backcharged us for prior years, from 2010 to March 1st. They corrected the problem, PG&E was the original installer of the transformer. They corrected the problem, and then we're seeing, we're now realizing the full weight of what those costs are, as well as, like I said, those new peak hour rate changes are also dramatically increasing.
And one last question, with the adjustment in the month of June and July, that period of the 29th through the 28th of 36. With the adjustment, uh, in the month of June and, uh, July, that period of the twenty-ninth through the twenty-eighth of thirty-six ninety-seven, was there another charge other than the thirty-six ninety-seven for, for PG&E services? Or was that the only charge we had?
Yeah, so, um, you'll see on the top and the bottom of that is that six fifteen to seven fourteen and the seven fifteen to eight fifteen. So that's covering that six twenty-nine to seven twenty-eight, um, period. So my understanding is it, it was just a, a correction on PG&E's part. Um, uh, it was, that's not intended to be, you're only getting charged thirty-seven dollars for, for that month period. It was, it was, uh, most likely from, uh, the previous, uh, uh, time period their billing was just off. Um, and they just needed to correct that thirty-seven dollars. But I wanted to include it because it was a billing, uh, statement with the community center. So, um, I wanted to include everything that we've been billed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Lewis. Uh, if there were, there were no further, uh, questions. Uh, so Ms. Lewis, if you'd like to make the motion to approve consent agenda.
Yes, I will, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second it.
Thank you. That motion by Ms. Lewis, council member Lewis, to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Uh, second by Mayor Portem Lambert. Ms. Maloney?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lawmiss? Faria? Faria?
Sorry about that. Hit that mute button. Uh, yes, motion carried unanimously, uh, with, uh, council member Lawmiss absent. Move on to binding the public notices, and we have no report. And then we're going to move to item nine, City Manager Report. City Manager Pinero, and that's his report pursuant to Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, three, C three, Executive Compensation, Public Works Director, City Engineer. Mr. Pinero?
Good morning, uh, good afternoon, I should say, or good evening, uh, Mayor Faria and council. Uh, after providing you folks, we, uh, have our new Public Works Director. Um, started here today. We're excited to have him here in the city of Los Angeles and to be here with us. Like to introduce him here. Um, his name is Niron, and, um, was able to go around town today and introduce him to the team. And, um, we can all give him a wave and, you know, support him as he comes onboard, and he's excited to be here. So, uh, Niron, if you'd like, and say a couple of words for us, please.
You hear me okay, Josh? Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, thank you so much for the opportunity. And again, I want to extend the appreciation to the city manager as well as the executive teams for the opportunity from here to, um, to serve the community, which I now also live in. So I am really excited to be part of this team and, um, to help councils and, uh, the city in any way possible. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome aboard.
All we have for this evening, uh, Mayor.
Um, Mr. City Manager, you needed to read that report that was attached to, to your agenda worksheet, please.
Based upon the employment agreement executed by the city manager, the Public Works Director slash City Engineer's salary will be thirteen thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars monthly, a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars annually, effective February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Very good, and thank you once again. And welcome once again. All right. That means we move on to the report on an update on Merced County Association of Governments, M C A G, Peninsula Clean Energy, and Measure V Committee. So, uh, I'll go to Peninsula Clean Energy first. We have workshops coming up Tuesday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, at six P M. It'll be in Spanish. It'll be presented virtually and in person at the Los Angeles Community Center in the Grand Room. Um, and this is net energy metering and solar customers. Uh, and then Thursday, March thirty-first, this workshop will be presented in the English for regular customers. In this workshop, Peninsula Clean Energy will staff, uh, will, this energy staff will cover how it works, rates, energy sources, savings, et cetera. And then Thursday, April twenty-first, be a workshop in English for the net energy metering or solar customers. And this workshop staff will cover solar billing, sample PG&E bills, changes to energy bill when you join Peninsula Clean Energy, and Q and A, uh, to answer your questions. And so, uh, these will be held, uh, in the community center and virtually simultaneously. So that's in there. M C A G, we have a meeting tomorrow. There is the, um, there is going to be some discussion about the joint powers agreement, um, which is due to be renewed over the next, course of the next year. And so, uh, people can check that website, M C A G website, Agenda Center, and read there. I'll be, uh, bringing back more information to the council on those issues. We've got, um, some information that just came in right now, uh, from, from Caltrans. Um, and we've got a project update on the John Areca Safety Roadside Rest Area. Uh, and, um, they've got, they're going to reconstruct, span and modernize, northbound and southbound sides. And then State Route one sixty-five, we're going to upgrade the ADA facilities within the city of Los Angeles. This project is loaded, located in the city of Los Angeles, two point two miles south of State Route one fifty-two, the Santa Cruz Way. Project will upgrade Americans with Disabilities Act facilities. And so we're very excited to see that going on within our city. We have these highways that come through our town, and so, uh, we have this close relationship with Caltrans because of it. Um, and let's see, State Route one fifty-two and Eleventh Street Intersection Control Improvement. We've installed the, the turn signals there. Um, and there is a State Route Los Angeles Safety Task Force. And they, I met on June first, uh, last year, we met on June first last year. Uh, and, um, Caltrans is leading installation of raised median to reinforce right-out turning movements with two hundred feet of intersections on State Route one fifty-two uh, from West I Street to Ward Road. So these are extensive little things that just came in, I mean, just while I was here. So the timing couldn't be better. Um, so that's what's going on there from M C A G, Measure V, and of course, M C A G, Caltrans gives us our updates through them, and Peninsula Clean Energy. So with that, close item ten and go to item eleven, our city council member reports. And we would start the council member Lawmiss, who is not here tonight. So then we'll move to council member Jones.
No reports, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Portem Lambert?
Uh, no report, but I would like to, uh, welcome our new Parks and Director and look forward to working with him.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. And, uh, welcome aboard to Mr. Niron. Ten, I think, is how the last name is, uh, pronounced. If I'm wrong, please forgive me. Uh, I also look forward to working with you, uh, as a council member. And, uh, uh, secondly, I, I'd like to say, uh, today I was able to attend a, a beautifully wonderful installation ceremony in Turlock for the new Chief of Police, Jason Haddon. Um, it was a extremely large turnout. Uh, our county sheriff, Vern Warrenkey, uh, came with his staff uh, and supported, um, uh, the new chief, the new chief of police. Uh, Chief Haddon will be, uh, truly missed in our city. And Turlock has gained a, a wonderful person. And I know that he will serve them well. And so I want to congratulate, uh, Chief Haddon in his new appointment. Um, and secondly, I, I'd just like to make a statement based on one of our items, uh, tonight on the agenda, which was the increase in budget, uh, for the electricity for the community center. Um, I would like to make a council member request while staff is investigating the possibility of solar for that building, that we also look at City Hall as well as the, um, any other building that has, uh, heavy usage in our city. I know that when we build our police department, it is more than likely going to have solar. Um, council hasn't decided how we're going to use the facility once it's empty or even our, our annex across the street. But I think it's time that we start moving forward and planning. Um, uh, we have the Clean Peninsula Energy that we've contracted with, and we also have the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control, who offers, uh, great incentives to, to help out municipalities with, with, uh, solar. So I, I think it's time to not only investigate the community center, but moving forward to investigate for City Hall and any other high-usage building in our city. So when the report comes back, um, I, I think we need to include those facilities as well so that council can start planning for the future, uh, to incorporate solar um, and reduce our, our, our usage of PG&E on our, on our, uh, buildings and save the public money. And that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Uh, I agree on the solar, the more solar we can do, I think, uh, more efficient and more money we can save. Uh, and I think P, hopefully P C E will be able to help us out, find us some more revenue sources to install more. Um, well, my comments will be my address tonight. I will ask for indulgence about one minute or so. I'm going to shut my camera off and reset myself because I'm going to be reading from my notes instead of my computer. Uh, so I'm just going to kill my camera for about, oh, maybe a minute or so. I set myself up, and then I will begin. Thank you. All right, I'm back. Well, good evening, everyone. We welcome you to Los Angeles. Mayor's Statement and City Address, twenty twenty-two. Of course, with us tonight, we have our city council, um, council member Lawmiss unable to attend. Uh, and we're pleased to have everyone here, Mayor Portem Lambert, council members Jones, Lewis, uh, and our newly hired city manager, Mr. Josh Pinero. This last year has been a very busy one for our city. Together, we have faced the challenges of COVID nineteen, crime, and homelessness, continuing to pursue remedies for these issues while at the same time addressing the challenges of providing civic and recreational services and encouraging commercial and industrial development to enhance opportunities and quality of life for our residents. Please forgive me if my report, if I repeat myself on some items. So much of what we do in the city involves more than one department at a time. I will start with Community and Economic Development under the direction of Director Stacey, Ms. Stacey Schutzel. Economic development is a priority in the city of Los Angeles. And we are spreading the message that Los Angeles is open for business. Due to our proximity to Silicon Valley and as a result of the many residential annexations that took place in the late nineties and early two thousands, Los Angeles has become one of the fastest-growing family-oriented communities in the state of California. Per preliminary twenty twenty census data is reporting Los Angeles population to be forty-five thousand five hundred and thirty-two. This is a twenty-six point five percent increase from the two thousand ten census. We are keenly focused on attracting more industry to Los Angeles. Our goal is to reduce mega-commutes for our workforce and to improve the quality of life for our residents. We have recently annexed twenty-eight point five acres for industrial development. We now intend to pursue getting infrastructure in place to entice new industrial investment in our city. Industrial development not only creates job opportunities, it also increases property tax revenues without impacting residential city services. We're working on several leads that will hopefully come to fruition in twenty-two, twenty-three. Through Chaven Concepts, we've identified target industries that will be expanding and will need new locations. We are meeting regularly with various businesses looking to expand and who are considering Los Angeles as a part of their site selection. In the area of commercial development, the city is experiencing many new business investments. We have a new bowling alley, jungle gyms, adventure lanes. IHOP is under construction with their new concept of including a drive-through and an outdoor patio. We have a new ARCO A M P. We now have Los Angeles Memory Care Facility. The new Merced School Employees Federal Credit Union Branch Facility will have three drive-through ATMs. It's there on the corner of Scripps and Mercy Sprint. All these in addition to the extensive retail we have added with the aid of our consultant, Buxton, over the last few years, including Ross Dress for Less, Marshals, Dutch Bros, and Chipotle. And Ethan Conrad has brought us big blocks in the old J C Penney Building and grocery outlet, Bargain Market, and the old Safemark. Talk a lot about our downtown. We have a beautiful downtown with tremendous historical value and, and, and tradition. Los Angeles is greatly committed to the revitalization of the downtown. Our partnerships with Chamber of Commerce and the Los Angeles Downtown Association help to encourage activity there. We have added American flags downtown and have enhanced our holiday decorations. Civic events such as street fairs, the Fourth of July event, farm-to-table dinner, Christmas lighting ceremony, Christmas parade, late-night Thursdays in December with visits from Santa, are all part of this revitalization effort. Jams Two Oh Nine is a modern sports bar going into the old press theater. That's a beautiful old historic building. I know a lot of us are very excited to see it get remodeled and brought, brought up and put back into a beautiful use. We're planning the construction of a new archway sign over Sixth Street at Pacheco Boulevard to attract the thousands of vehicles driving on State Route one fifty-two into historic downtown Los Angeles. We're developing a downtown master plan to design underground utilities and develop a streetscape plan for downtown as well. Over the past year, as a result of all our efforts, we're seeing new development, investment in downtown, and more exciting new development to come. Use the word excited a lot in economic development because every time we see something new, we get excited about it. Uh, and so many, it benefits our city in, in so many ways. We're also, uh, looking forward to the construction of a new Millikan Museum. This will highlight the rich history of Los Angeles. Its projects are being developed through a partnership, Millikan Museum Historical Society, the San Joaquin River Exchange Contractors Water Authority, San Luis and Delta Mendota Water Authority, and the Nickel Bowls Families, the descendants of Henry Miller. This new museum will be located on the rail trail near the former train depot, which was the main reason Los Angeles became a community in its present location. To add to all this, Community and Economic Development is also wrapping up the new general plan update, which will create even more opportunities for future Los Angeles. Health and hospital. Health, the old saying is, you're nothing, you're, you're nothing if you don't have your health. You're rich if you do, if you do have it. The COVID nineteen pandemic has made very clear our need for a larger hospital. COVID nineteen has put a major strain on the entire medical industry. Much of the money generated in the medical industry is from elective surgeries. But many of these surgeries have had to be postponed because of the increased demand placed on hospice, hospital facilities and staff by the COVID nineteen pandemic. The result is that hospitals do not have extra capital available for expansion. We've been in conversations with Center Memorial Hospital regarding potential expansion of their facility and/or relocation of their facilities. And we are actively researching other firms who might be interested in building a regional hospital in or near Los Angeles, one large enough to serve the entire west side of Merced County. This goal remains one of Los Angeles' greatest challenges. We will continue to pursue it until it comes to fruition. Now move to police and crime. Unfortunately, crime exists. But fortunately, we have our police department to help us fight and prevent it. Our police department is led by Chief Yuri Brizzi. In two thousand twenty-one, we were able to greatly reduce our violent crime. In 2021, we were able to greatly reduce our violent crime. In 2020, we had nine homicides. In 2021, that number was reduced to two. Aggravated assault was reduced from one hundred and sixty cases in 2020 to one hundred and twenty-two in 2021. And shootings went from sixty-one in 2020 to twenty-nine in 2021. We still have too many violent crimes. But we have added necessary staffing to aggressively address these offenses and are looking to add more. We have forty-four sworn on our roster with approved openings for forty-eight, and we are actively recruiting to fill these four positions. We have also created a task force that specializes in gang-related crimes, seeking to prevent them before they occur. Our code enforcement has been extremely active as well, increasing our proactive activities by fifty percent over the last year. We have more than doubled our officer-initiated calls. We have doubled our traffic stops from five thousand in 2020 to ten thousand in 2021. We have increased our abandoned vehicle abatement from seven hundred and forty-two to nine hundred. Unfortunately, property crimes have increased, including larceny, burglary, and vehicle theft. But with our increased presence in the police department and our proactive approach, I look for those numbers to decrease as have the violent crimes. One, I'm gonna use that word exciting again. One exciting thing we're doing is a new police station. Finally, after many decades of inadequate facilities for our police department, Los Manos will be constructing a new police station. Brown breaking will be in May of this year. This is very exciting news indeed. This project has been made possible through excellent financial management of our city over the past few years, along with funding for Measure H and Measure P. This project is being done in conjunction with the Public Works and Finance Departments, which have also been very busy this year. And fire is involved in the safety aspects of the construction and, uh, construction codes. It is because of the outstanding stewardship of our finance department that we have been able to fund this long overdue twenty-seven million dollar project. Our fire department is led by Chief Mason Hurley. Our fire department does not have a lot of staff, but covers a lot of ground. In 2021, our fire department responded to more than three thousand calls for service. Two hundred and thirty-six fires. We had three over pressures. Twelve hundred rescue and emergency medical, which makes up thirty-nine percent of the fire department's lifesaving work. We had eighty hazardous conditions, four hundred and eighty-three service calls, seven hundred and sixty-six good intent calls, seven hundred and sixty-six false alarms, eight severe weather, and five special incidents. I want to make special note of how large a percentage fires work. Is rescue and emergency medical, that's saving lives. Adds on top of the fires and all the other hazards they protect us from. Last year, we completed construction of a state-of-the-art training tower that is being utilized on an ongoing basis. Fire department personnel also performed eight hundred and eighty-one total business inspections. These inspections involve annual and new business inspections to ensure fire safety and code compliance. The fire department has a very broad set of responsibilities, which include public health and safety. They have continued to assist in coordination with Merced County OES and other public safety agencies to ensure the safety of, of our community. They have assisted in coordination of multiple COVID-19 testing sites. Have assisted in coordination of multiple COVID-19 vaccine distribution sites, helping distribute over five thousand COVID test kits in coordination with Golden Valley Health. We have purchased new firefighter structure gear, more rescue equipment, and firefighting hose through capital improvement funding. We have purchased self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA. Phase three of SCBA replacement continues, bringing all self-contained breathing apparatus accessories up to date and compliant with the National Fire Protection Association standards. An outdated and failing HVAC system at Fire Station One has been replaced. And back in 2020, we purchased a new fire engine, Engine Number Fifty-Two. We are applying for the 2021 Fire Prevention and Safety Program Grant to receive funding for updated technology that will assist in fire prevention and emergency response. This technology will also upgrade the records management program to track vital data and records for future planning. Our fire department continues to provide input into the design of the new police department facility, as I had mentioned before. We are presently in the process of restructuring our volunteer fire department to make it even more effective and to respond to the needs of the twentieth century. I'm sorry, twenty-first century. I'm only a hundred years behind with that one. And we are getting great results and great participation from our volunteers. Los Manos Fire Department continues to foster excellent working relationships with neighboring jurisdictions. Memorandums of understanding have been approved by council to participate in joint hazardous materials response and technical review teams with Merced County, City of Merced, and City of Atwater Fire Departments. These partnerships provide additional resources to the city of Los Manos, as well as scheduled specialized training for specialized types of emergency responses. The fire department has had some great community outreach. This past holiday season, I guess, Santa got escorted through the city on a fire engine. That was a lot of fun. Current staffing levels in fire have been challenged due to four retirements and one firefighter leaving the city of Los Manos to work for an agency in the Bay Area. These retirements included two engineers, one fire captain, and one assistant fire chief. The fire department is actively filling these positions through the recruitment process. We expect most vacant positions to be filled by the end of February. Presently, we have a fire captain and engineer posted at Fire Station Two. We are working on remodeling that facility so we can add a firefighter to that station. And I have three on duty there, which is a full fire truck squad. Drink a little water here before we go to Public Works. And tonight, we had the pleasure of meeting our new Public Works Director, Nioran Thann. I hope I pronounced it correctly. It is Public Works that keeps our water running, our roads paved, and our parks beautiful. The biggest Public Works project that was completed last year was the new solid waste contract with Mid Valley Disposal. This was a two-year-long project that required considerable staff time and effort. We are still working through some minor issues that need addressing. But overall, the service has been excellent. The new solid waste contract includes the processing of green waste and assistance meeting the requirements of SB thirteen eighty-three. This project and the resulting contract services provided has Los Manos leading the way in Merced County to meet SB thirteen eighty-three requirements. Last year presented us with some very tough challenges with our previous hauler. But we managed to negotiate a settlement that got approximately thirty dollars per customer back to our residents for the major inconveniences they suffered. We thank our legal team for that, uh, along with our staff, to get that settlement and able to get a little bit of money back to our customers, to our residents, somewhat compensate for the pain that they suffered. And believe you me, it was very painful. We overlaid two sections of the rail trail last year. This has been a tremendous improvement, both aesthetically and physically. And the walkability of the trail has been greatly enhanced. We paved both GNF streets last year with our own labor and equipment, resulting in improvement to both the ride and durability of both. Total cost for these two projects was two hundred and fifteen thousand seventy-five dollars, including equipment, labor, and materials. Extremely efficient there. Our urban water management plan was updated last spring. This plan is a requirement of the state and is used to manage the water use of Los Manos to meet goals set by formulas developed by the state. It is a complicated process that involves tallying all water used by residents and businesses to be able to determine the per capita use. We missed our target the last year, the five years. We think mostly due to the COVID and the increased water use by those who were stuck inside. Regarding water, also please note that the high nitrate levels in our water last fall were not in wells delivering water to our customers, but rather that water was being pumped out into the waste system. Finally, in Public Works, our airport is still operational, and we are looking at the possibility of moving it so that that land and the area around it will be more available for development, commercial, industrial, and even educational. But at this time, the cost of moving an airport and the process is extremely difficult and extremely expensive because you have to be able to open a new airport before you can close the old one. So we are working on that, continue to work on that, to make sure we have an airport and have an airport in a place that serves our citizens even better than how it does now. Now, what is a city without fun stuff to do? That's primarily handled by the Parks and Recreation Department, and that's under the umbrella of Public Works and is led by Parks and Recreation Operations Manager, Joe Heine. Los Manos has more than forty, closer to fifty, parks and green spaces. We're continuing to improve our parks, public spaces, and public buildings. We've added several new park amenities to the park system. These include the new city park playground, the shade sale at Vineyard Bee Park, painting basketball courts at College Greens and Gardens One, extending the bluff drive connection on the canal trail, and building improvements to College Greens and Miller and Lux buildings. We have upgraded our College Greens building and are working on the Miller and Lux building at this time. We are, we offer many activities for residents of all ages. Flag football, open gym basketball, pickleball, movies in the park, foul sports programs are all included. We have youth evolution, outdoor soccer, and basketball, give-and-go indoor soccer, Forty-Niners prep flag football, summer and fall youth volleyball, breakfast with Santa, T-ball and coach pitch, fall outdoor youth soccer, and the list goes on and on and is very, and it makes us very happy to see. We co-sponsor events like the Christmas Parade and the Fourth of July in the Plaza with Downtown Association. Christmas Parade is put on by the Chamber of Commerce. We have our first annual egg hunt coming this year. It's called the Great Los Manos Egg Scramble. It's coming up in the spring. We have National Night Out. We coordinate with public safety for that. It's always a great big success. People come out, enjoy that summer evening. We have our Veterans Parade with the Veterans of Foreign Wars and the American Legion. We have our Chamber of Commerce Street Fairs. We have our May Day Fair, which includes the May Day Parade. We have our salute seniors in September. We also have Palladium Fatima Four-Hinge Sewing Club, Merced College for Kids, Arbor Day, Ball Festival, the Ag Sports Complex, Golden Ager's Bingo, Community Blood Drives, and opening of our new dog park. We are presently in the planning stages of a splash pad. This will give our kids a chance to cool off in the summer. A public pool is still something we would love to see. Very expensive, almost has to be done in coordination with the school district because of the way they get used. Uh, but it is on our, on our list of, see if we can find a way to, to accomplish that. Most likely success route on that would be some sort of grant, uh, program. And then over the past year, Parks and Recreation have completed the Parks Master Plan. They approved the plan, we approved the plan in March twenty-one after over a year of work. It was awarded, an award from the American Planning Association will help to guide parks moving forward for the next fifteen years. As I mentioned earlier, the completion of the dog park. We completed construction of our first dog park in April of twenty-one, held a grand opening in October of twenty-one. And we are very excited for this project to finally come to fruition. It features a small dog and mixed dog area with over fifty trees and two drinking pumps. And I mentioned our park amenities and our rail, rail trail overlays. These are in conjunction with Public Works. And so we, with our rail trail overlay, we have safe, smooth walkway. We've even upgraded the signs on the entire length of the trail. You'll notice too, we've upgraded signs in our parks, particularly Pacheco Park. And we're working on upgrading the irrigation systems on all our parks to make sure they stay nice and green and are efficient with water usage. We continue to apply for grants for various park projects. And we understand that even more money has been made available for them this year. So we'll continue pursuing those grants, bringing more money home to our town to serve our residents. Next, we're going to discuss Measure H. We here at the city want to thank our citizens for passing Measure H. The sales taxes provided us over two million dollars per year, eighty-five percent of which is dedicated through council pledge to public safety. With these funds, we have been able to hire enough police officers and firefighters to get us back to pre-recession staffing levels. Fifteen percent of Measure H is dedicated to public amenities, and that's one of the reasons you're seeing all these activities in Parks and Recreation. This money has allowed us to hire more recreation staff and increase our recreation offerings to include activities for all ages and interests at very low cost to our users. MCAG, Caltrans, and Measure V are all connected with each other. Measure V is a county-wide sales tax managed by the Merced County Association of Governments, specifically dedicated to transportation projects. It is particularly designed to help our region leverage state and federal dollars for those major regional highway projects that are needed by the residents of Merced County. Projects that have already been completed are the Henry Miller Avenue-Inglemar Grade, State Route one sixty-five. Work has been done on that, on those roads. That was five point three miles. Inglemar Grade, Fahy Road, Volter Road, two point two miles. Volter Road, State Route one fifty-two, and Inglemar Grade, two point eight miles. Badger Flat Road, Los Manos City Limits, Inglemar, Los Manos, Inglemar Grade, Los Manos, point nine miles completed. Those are the projects that have been completed. Projects in the process are the synchronized signalization of Pacheco Boulevard, the development of pedestrian bike paths from the city limit out to the Los Manos Campus in Merced College, and the biggest of our Measure V projects, the Pacheco Pioneer Complete Streets Project. This project includes the widening of Pioneer Boulevard to four lengths, signalization of intersections along Pioneer, such as Ortega Lita. Eventually, it will also include the extension of Pioneer Boulevard to both east and west of Los Manos. Our goal with this project is to ease the challenges created by the heavy traffic to our city without losing the benefit of the sales and property taxes collected through all the highway, commercial, and retail sales along Pacheco Boulevard. Regarding our highways, Caltrans is primary jurisdiction over the three state highways that go through town, one fifty-two, one sixty-five, and thirty-three, along with the local county cross-street intersections. But we have been actively engaged with them as we plan for our present transportation challenges and future transportation needs. We are presently conducting traffic studies of the intersection of Ortega Lita and Pioneer for a traffic signal there. And I have requested that they do the same at the intersection of Mercy Springs and Pioneer. Caltrans also offers incentives for state highway cleanup projects which benefit all jurisdictions. The little stipends are included for people who help. Measure V also includes the plan for a pedestrian bike path connecting Los Manos City Limits to Merced College, the Los, uh, Los Manos College, Los Manos Campus. This project is still in the early stages and involves multiple jurisdictions as the bulk of the project is not in the city limits, but is on our list to get done. Measure V also provides money directly to our Public Works Department to repair and rebuild our own city streets, approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. MCAG, Merced County Association of Governments, also manages the Billy Wright landfill. Having this operational landfill close to town is not only extremely convenient for our Los Manos residents, it also helps keep solid waste transportation costs down. And they're keeping our, um, our civic, our, our city builds. Uh, when you get your city water built and garbage built, it helps keep those prices down. In the realm of electrical power, Los Manos will soon be receiving clean electrical power generated by wind and solar sources through Penin- generated by wind and solar sources through Peninsula Clean Energy. We are a part of that JPA, the only city in the valley so far. PCE, Peninsula Clean Energy, guarantees a five percent discount on the generation portion of the energy bill. Please note that this is not the entire bill, only the generation portion. Our residents will still receive their bills through PG&E, but the electricity generated through clean energy systems, such as, will be generated through clean energy systems such as wind and solar. The bills will be laid out slightly differently, and customers with personal solar rooftop systems will receive their true-ups at shorter intervals rather than annually. Most what we've been talking about is the positive stuff, but we also have to address not-so-positive homelessness. Over the past couple of years, three of the biggest issues in the public arena have been crime, COVID-nineteen, and homelessness. Homelessness is among the most difficult of our challenges as it involves some very human issues on so many levels. Housing costs in California, particularly in the Bay Area and its suburbs, have risen dramatically over the past few years. That, along with redevelopment of some older, lower-income housing tracts, has left a large number of people without an affordable place to live. Adding to these issues are the sad increases in mental health and substance abuse cases. We at the city are often asked why we tolerate the homeless living on city property. We are bound by a federal court case decision, Martin versus Boise. In that two thousand eighteen decision, the court ruled that a government agency cannot prevent the homeless from occupying publicly-owned property unless some kind of shelter is available to take them in. Fortunately, we have received a great deal of assistance from the State of California's Project Room Key, Continual Care, and other sources, which have rented out, which has rented out a hotel to house twenty-five unsheltered individuals. Houses throughout our city have also been purchased or rented to allow us to bring in approximately fifty of our one hundred-plus homeless individuals. So, we've managed to bring in half our homeless off the street. For those still unsheltered, the law allows the city to create sanctioned encampments. Right now, we are working on a fencing project on our BLA property east of the city, which will provide essentially a campground with tents and services for the unsheltered until we can procure more housing for our homeless population. More services and facilities are needed and are being pursued as the problem is ongoing and is not expected to end anytime soon. I have note that the hotel project has been very successful. And so successful in fact, our homeless, so successful, we have three of our homeless have actually gotten off homeless assistance, gotten out, and gotten jobs, and are getting out and able to live their lives again. So, these are some wonderful success stories we get to share. Next, we'll go to finance. People are saying it's all about the money. But we can all, we can have all the philanthropic intent we want, but without the funding, all those plans are for naught. Our finance director is Ms. Sonia Williams, and our city treasurer is Ms. Kim Tomas. One of Los Banas' greatest challenges is finance. We have forty-two thousand, now our census is showing forty-five thousand residents, but only nineteen million dollars in this year's general fund. During the recession in two thousand nine, the general fund dropped to nine million. If we compare that to Morgan Hill, which also has about forty thousand residents, we see that their general fund is about forty million dollars. What this means is that we must be very meticulous in the handling of our money, and we have been. We have managed to negotiate salary increases for all our employees this year and still budget for the upgrades of parks and public buildings, the construction of the recently completed fire training tower and a new police station, the groundbreaking of which will be in May of this year, as I mentioned earlier. With the help of Measure H, we have also been able to dramatically increase our recreation offerings and hire more personnel in that department. Our proximity to the Bay Area causes our housing prices to be higher than most of the Central Valley, but we cannot afford to pay the salaries that wealthier cities pay, which makes it very difficult to retain talented employees in our city. Our citizens have passed and supported Measure H and Measure P throughout the years, which is why we have been able to get our public safety staffing back up to pre-recession levels. And I mentioned this earlier, but once again, crossing over departments is what we do in the city. I don't know any department that doesn't have... Every department in the city is coordinated with every other, and none of us can live, no department can function by itself. Finance has also been tasked with overseeing the funds from the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. Los Banas expects to receive a little under ten million. We have collected four point nine million. We expect four point nine million more in future revenues. We have invested one million dollars in the Rad Card Program. This is a gift card, digital gift card, dedicated to the small locally-owned businesses in our entire city. We have spent two hundred thousand dollars on police equipment and technology, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on replacement of HVAC equipment within the city. We've spent a hundred thousand dollars in homeless assistance, seventy-five thousand dollars in park improvements, particularly Colorado Park. We've spent seven hundred eighty-nine thousand in premium pay for essential workers during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. This was fiscal year twenty-one. Sixty thousand in premium pay for benefits for our essential workers during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Once again, fiscal year twenty-one. We have appropriated six point four million to revenue reimbursement. That is, so we can cover costs, expenditures caused by COVID-nineteen as they come our way. We expect to spend a little under one million dollars in premium pay for essential workers in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. We expect to spend about sixty thousand in premium pay for benefits. We expect to spend a little under one million on premium pay. So, for twenty-two, twenty-three. And I have a funny feeling I double typed something. I sure did. So, you got to hear it twice, hear it twice. Total ARPA expenditure is nine point eight million. Finally, our department, our final department is Human Resources. Human Resources is the department that takes care of our city employees, takes care of our city employees' health and well-being. And our Human Resources Director and elected city clerk, Ms. Lucy Maloney. And I have covered much of what that department has achieved with the various contracts and raises and service benefits to our employees. And also, she is, that department, led by Ms. Maloney, is very heavily involved in all our hirings and with all the departments, once again, coordination of the entire city together. Next, I'm gonna go to commissions and committees. You know, people often ask, how can I help? Well, what we are in, what we are in great need of right now are citizens who are willing to serve on commissions and committees. We still have a number of vacancies that need to be filled by individuals seeking to improve the quality of life in Los Banas. So, please go to the city website, look up, we have Measure B, Measure H, various commissions and committees that help advise our city and help us run. Some of them are absolutely necessary. We have to have forums to make decisions. So, please, get involved, join us. Become part of our city decision-making force. Finally, and my closing here. It has been my honor to serve this community as a music teacher for thirty-seven years, as Councilmember for fourteen, and now as your current mayor. I have had the joy of raising my own family here and teaching music to our children. My goal is that Los Banas can bring the same opportunity to our residents now as it has for me and my family throughout the years. I want to thank you for joining us this evening, and I hope you all have a wonderful, great evening. And with that, I believe the next item on the agenda is a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, so moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember Jones, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Jones, to adjourn the meeting. Roll call, Ms. Maloney?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Law Miss?
Foria?
Yes, motion carried. Meeting is adjourned at seven fourteen PM. Thank you. Have a great night.